Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the May 6th Board of Supervisors meeting. We did have a closed session, so we need to...
Certify.
Certify.
Board members, do each of you certify that to the best of your knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board of Supervisors in closed meetings? If you could just ram through the roll.
Roll call. Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you. One thing everybody should know, if you haven't heard already, we did have the Rummel Tourist Home application was pulled. So if you're here for that, you don't need to be. You can stay, but you don't need to be. Which means we will go right into the public hearing with regards to the VDOT Secondary Six-Year Plan.
Yes, I'll just give a quick introduction, and then you can hear from the public. As the Board is aware, every year you receive input from the public regarding the six-year plan for secondary roads. By and large, the Board of Supervisors is empowered to allocate funding for projects in your community. The bulk of your funding available for this is specifically set aside to hard-surface gravel roads. There is a small amount of money that is, has more flexibility. A public hearing notice was placed in the newspapers as required by the Code of Virginia, and it identified that your current plan includes the following roads, road segments to be hard-surface: Kaiser Run Road, the remaining gravel sections; Horton Hollow Road, .4 miles extending north from the current hard surface; Pullins Bluff Road, the entire length; Turkey Ridge Road, .8 miles from the current Culpeper Line, .8 miles towards the One-Lane Bridge; and then Sycamore Ridge Road, .7 miles the entire length. The Board of Supervisors is seeking input on two additional potential roads to, one of two additional roads to consider adding to this six-year plan: Turkey Ridge Road, which is the next segment that would take the hard surface all the way to the One-Lane Bridge, or Castleton View Road, which is a .85-mile section that would hard-surface all of the remaining gravel sections on that road. Before you can allocate funding for this second, six-year secondary plan, you must hear from the public if this public hearing was properly advertised. We have also placed step-in signs on the sections of road for Turkey Ridge Road and Castleton View Road to solicit input. I have received communication in my office from two individuals supporting Castleton View Road. I've heard from nobody regarding Turkey Ridge Road. And then earlier today, you heard from the chief of Castleton...
President.
President of Castleton Community Volunteer Fire Company requesting that you give positive consideration to Castleton View Road. With that, I think it would be appropriate to hear from the public.
All right. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized. When you come up, give us your name and your district, and I'm going to try to limit the conversation to no more than five minutes.
Okay. Hopefully it'll only take about three. My name is Rod Osborne. I'm in the Stonewall Hawthorne District. I, in fact, live on Castle Mountain Road, which is one of the gravel roads in our county. I'm here to find out why that one wasn't considered for the VDOT Six-Year Plan. We've lived on Castle Mountain for 20 years. Traffic used to be almost nonexistent, but with everything else and the growth that we've had, it's become, increased significantly. With the increased traffic, the road has become hard to maintain. A few months ago, VDOT had begun a widening project of the road. They were out there for a few days, ticking dirt from either side of the road to, which amounted to really six to 10 inches on either side, and in doing so, took what little gravel we had in the dump trucks with them when they left, or at least a lot of it. When I asked the workers that were on site if we were ever going to get the tar and chipping that we've been asking for, they said, "I really hope so, because this road is a mess." That was from the worker's own mouth. A couple of years ago, the school bus stopped. The school buses have stopped driving on our road because it's such a hazard. Now, parents are picking up their children at the end of the roads and dropping them off for the school buses. So I, I want to know, if the road is too unsafe for school buses to travel, why is it any safer for us? The road is either very dusty or very muddy. It's, there's very little in between. On a day like today, you can expect to slide around on the mud, and two days from now, it'll be too dusty to see a car coming around the corner. I called VDOT a few months ago to ask them what the posted speed limit was on the road, because in my 20 years, there's never been a speed limit sign there. Typically, people drive at a pace that is safe. With the, with the added traffic, and some of these people who are leasing farmland or new to the area, travel that road at a high rate of speed, in my opinion, too fast for the conditions. VDOT told me that if it's not posted, it's 55 miles an hour, to which I laughed, because it's a, if you've never traveled Castle Mountain Road, it's virtually a one-and-a-half-lane road, and it's windy and it's dusty, and coming to a stop on a curve when you meet another car sometimes is tricky. So I challenged that, and I got a call a couple of days later saying that, "No, it's 35 miles an hour," to which I said, "Well, that's better, but it's still for that road and the condition that it is in, not very safe." I realized that widening the road and paving it is a pretty big and costly task. I'm not even sure if I can speak for those who are in favor of something happening, that that's necessarily a possibility right now, but I would, I would encourage the Board and the VDOT to consider tar and chipping, or something to mitigate the dust and the In any case, I know that I'm not the only one that's been asking for something to be done on that road for, for a few years now, and I'd like to know why Castle Mountain wasn't considered. I know that people, the squeaky wheel gets to grease, so to speak, and funds are limited, but I know that we've been squeaking for a little while on Castle Mountain, and I'd like to know when we can get some consideration for something to happen. Before something happens, like an accident. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Karen Rubel, and I am also from Castle Mountain Road, Stonewall Hawthorne District, and I would like to applaud what Mr. Osborne just said, because all of our feelings are about the same. I'd like to know what the criteria is for getting our road paved. It doesn't seem like it's going to happen in my lifetime, but maybe someone else's. We have been asking for 23 years when we built our forever home on Castle Mountain Road, and nothing has happened yet. It is a mud pit on days like today, and as soon as the sun comes out, it becomes nothing but a dust bowl. When we moved there a few years back, 23, there were approximately four to six cars on that road a day. Now, there are approximately 45 a day, including all of the FedEx trucks, the UPS trucks, the Amazon Prime trucks, et cetera, et cetera. The dust is unbelievable, and if you are unfortunate, as I am, to have a husband with COPD or emphysema, he can no longer enjoy being out in his front yard or sitting on the porch. I literally can go out with my hands and scoop up the dust. Whether it's paved or not, and I'm sure there are as many people who don't want it paved as do, we're asking for tar and chips just to keep the dust and the mud at bay. We've called VDOT many times, and we do get someone out there to grade what little bit of gravel may be there, put it in the ditch, and then we go back to the mud again. And as soon as the sun comes out, we get the dust again. So we're asking for help. I don't think we're asking for anything that is totally unrealistic. Other roads seem to be able to get some help. We need your help, too. So we're asking that you just listen to what the people on the road are saying and give us a little bit of help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Tom Taylor from Piedmont. I'm here about the Sycamore Ridge Road. It's been on and off the list several times, and I think it got on last year. Mike Atkins did all the legwork last year and reached out to all the neighbors. I'm here for my sister and for Mike, and the family farm comes off there in one spot there, too. But Mike actually had reached out and gotten everybody that agreed that they would love to have something done to it. I mean, we don't, you know, it doesn't have to be paved, but it can be tar and chipped or something like that. I know you only have limited dollars to spread around. But we do have two things that are kind of interesting. On each end of the Sycamore Ridge Road is where you have access to the Shandong National Park, so we have a tremendous, I say, to me, it's a tremendous amount of people. Maybe it's only, you know, a few every weekend or whatever, but they park on either end, and, and that's not y'all's problem, and it's not my problem, but it is, it does create traffic. And then they'll go from, they'll park there and they'll drive across, and it's like any gravel road like they're talking about, it's dusty and it's narrow, so anything that could be used to improve it, and we're hoping we can stay on the list and gradually move on up, so. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I'm Tony Van Acker. I live on Castle Mountain Road, and I'm from the Stonewall Hawthorne District. And I just want to echo what my neighbors have said, that the road is very dusty at times. I think the road actually has two particular issues with it. One is dust and mud, and the other is just the narrowness and torturous turns in the road. Now, I've gone less than the speed limit and still been very inconvenienced by a flatbed truck coming around the bend that is two deep ditches on both sides. I'm not advocating that we widen the road. I've lived in a place, other places in the world where I've dealt with narrow roads and dangerous conditions, and I can deal with that, but I think the dust and the, and the mud and the stones that are mixed in with the gravel that are put on the road, some of them are as big as my fist or half the size of my head, and I go walking up and down the road to pick them up and throw them, throw them off the road, because I don't want to hurt my car tires. But if we can get a tar and chip on that road, I live set back from the road. I don't get as much dust as all of you do, but I can imagine what it must be like. But certainly, tar and chip would be a good solution to that road. That'd be a lot less, cheaper option than trying to widen it, make it a Richmond Road.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Rod McElloch of Jackson District. Just on a personal level, I drive on these roads. I've driven on them for years or whatever. I just paid $1,800 to have the suspension rebuilt in the rear of my vehicle, and it's a result of gravel roads. And today's, the vehicles that are being built today are not designed to drive on gravel roads, so basically, it's costing the citizens of the, you know, county money if they're living on these gravel roads, because that constant up and down is eating up your suspension system, and you've got to pay the price down there, and we need to pave them all. It's not going to have any great effect on the county overall, but it really will save the citizens a lot of money personally, not having to rebuild their vehicles because of these roads. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Barbara Anderson. I live in Castle Mountain Road also, in Stonewall Hawthorne District, and I can't really add a whole lot to what my neighbors have already said, but we do request that somebody please help us on this road. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Gahl, Stonewall Hawthorne District, and my wife and I, Beth and I, we moved out here in 1980. We bought property in Castleton in 1984, and like most all the citizens in this oasis we call Rappahannock, everybody goes in one of four directions for business, right? You go to Warrenton, or you go to Front Royal, or you go to Culpeper, maybe Lourey. So Culpeper was our center of, of activity. It's where, and we still buy all of our grocery supplies. I think we deal with Culpeper. Beth taught school at Culpeper for eight years. So we've been negotiating Castleton View Road for 40 years. Sometimes two, three times a day through the Little League years, it could even be more than that, so. Obviously, I'm here to advocate for support for the paving of, it's about a half a mile of dirt left there, I think, intermittently on the road, in total, in the aggregate. I'm here to advocate my support for the paving being done and, and hopefully some widening. But even more so than that, I think even a little bit more importantly than the paving is, for those of you that might be familiar with it, if you're at Scrabble and you start down the Scrabble Road and you turn right on the Castleton View Road, you go 1.2 miles, it'll bring you to a point where it changes back to pavement. It's an extreme curve. There's two big white oak trees right there, and it takes an extreme curve to the left and down. And when you're coming in the opposite direction, obviously, you're climbing up that curve, and that, that, that is a very, very dangerous spot. What I would ask, I honestly, if I had my choice to check the box of, you know, pave what's left of the road, or eliminate and improve that curve so that it's safe, I'd go for improving the curve, because there's going to be an accident someday. As the first speaker alluded to, with the influx of new folks we've had in the county, you know, the traffic, some of the traffic challenges have changed a little bit, and I've, I've met people almost on that curve, and it's, you know, it's very scary, and I'd really hate to meet a fire truck, okay? Especially one that's loaded on its way out. So in any case, I would like to offer my support for that, have you consider that. And while I'm at it, Castleton Mountain Road needs some attention, too.
Duly noted. What a politician.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Tommy Atkins, Jackson District. I don't know if this is the right time to bring this up, so I, is, I know we're talking about the six-year plan, but I have some concerns about other secondary roads that need some care, that need a lot of tender-lovin' care, and is this, or do you want me to wait until we have the informal public hearing?
If you can keep it less than five minutes, we'll go ahead.
I think I can probably do that. All right. All right, as I said, there are several secondary roads in the county that need some tender-lovin' care. And one that's dear to my heart is Route 600, Woodward Road. Before all of you get upset, start clamoring back here, I'm not looking for a 50-foot right-of-way. We're not looking for that, so just don't go there. We have, on Woodward Road, we have some sections that two vehicles cannot pass safely, and there are sections that if a fire truck or if a school bus would come, no way a car can pass, those cannot pass. One has to stop, back up, let the other one get by. I own property on Woodward Road. I have a house there, and I don't want to be caught in a situation that a fire truck cannot get to my house if there's a fire. God help it, does not catch on fire, but if it does, I don't want to be caught in a situation to where the fire truck cannot get to my house and put a fire out, because the road is not wide enough. So, yes, I know it's a 30-foot prescribed right-of-way, but that doesn't mean it has to stay a pig trail. There is room that, there is wide enough to where you can move from one side to the other, and you can get two vehicles to pass safely. So that's what I'm asking for y'all's support. You know, I know that they have a rural rustic program now, and Loudoun County is using it very well, and they're the most wealthy county in this country, not only the state of Virginia, but the whole country, and they have more gravel roads than any other part of the state of Virginia. So they, those wealthy people can do it. I believe y'all can give us a little support, and we can get some safe. I know there's people on Woodward Road wanting it to remain a pig trail. I don't want it to remain, remain a pig trail. I want it to be safe. And I don't, I don't buy this thing that people say, "Well, I've traveled that road. I know where to stop and let people get by. That dog don't hunt with me." Because everybody doesn't know that, and we don't have all these great drivers that these people say that they are. So I'm asking you, please, give us some help on Woodward Road, and I'm not looking for 50-foot right-of-ways.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy.
Anyone else? Yes, me.
Erin Catherine Ishi, Piedmont. I, I think that roads that are traveled a lot and, you know, have a lot of traffic on them, they definitely need to be made safe. And I think that people who live on these roads, they should be given a great deal of deference in decisions made on, on what happens with them. But I just wanted to kind of present the other side of the coin a little bit. I grew up on a gravel road. I live on a gravel road now and have for the past 25 years here in Rappahannock, and I know they can be a pain in the neck. They're dusty, and if you want to keep, if you have a nice car and you want to keep it clean, you know, that's just not going to happen on a gravel road. I drive a Subaru, and I think they're supposed to be dusty, so I guess I don't get to complain. But if you have a really nice car, that's, that's a nuisance. But I know that the road that I grew up on was winding down to our house, and people who accidentally got on that road would stop and knock on our door and just tell us what a little piece of heaven they thought that was. And, you know, it wasn't entirely because of the road. It was partly because it was undeveloped still back there, but I think that does speak to what it means to be on a road that's not paved. There aren't many roads that aren't, and a road that's, I'm speaking now at the moment specifically with my experience of Swindler Hollow and Sycamore Ridge. And again, I think deference ought to be given to those who, who live on the road, but I've walked those roads now for 25 years, and I just would urge the residents to think about a few other issues about them. One is that traffic calming is, it does mention, even in the comprehensive plan and our future traffic planning, transportation planning, that unpaved roads can serve as a means of traffic calming, and that's my own experience as well. When they're paved, people tend to go faster. As others have mentioned, on those roads, there are two-part trailheads back there, and I've walked those more times than I can possibly count. And I do know that the other trailheads in the county that I'm aware of that are paved do get more, more traffic going to them, just because people are like, "Oh, there's the trailhead." So I think that pavement does tend to encourage more and faster traffic. So I think there are good reasons to keep them unpaved, and I just urge folks to think carefully, because once they're paved, they're never unpaved again, so, thank you.
Thank you. No one else in the courtroom? All right. We have a couple of people on Zoom. If you're interested in speaking with regards to the public hearing on the VDOT Six-Year Plan, please raise your Zoom hand. All right, not seeing any hands on Zoom, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to the board.
Well, I would just like to say thank you to all of the citizens from Stonewall Hawthorne that have come out tonight. I hear you all. I have driven that road. You are right. So I will be on it, for sure. Absolutely. We had earlier at today's meeting the president from Company Five come in and present us with a letter, and Company Five has been asking for several years to get Castleton, those pieces of Castleton View Road paved. So Mr. Curry initiated a study that VDOT did, and we found that it would, would, would be eligible for this, and it's their primary road out of that station. And they have cited so many issues with apparatus and with patients being transported over washboard. It's rough for them. So I'm really glad that we're able to do this today and that John was able to come and, and talk to, talk to everybody. I know that gravel roads can raise a lot of passions in people, but I think that this is really, really necessary and important for Company Five, so I'm glad that we're considering this this evening.
Thank you.
I just, so the other road that, Mr. Osborne and others have, not my district, but I believe it's Castle Mountain, right? And what is the, what's the total length that is at issue? Again, it's...
The road is about two and a half miles from end to end, and presently, school buses have to pick up on the road.
Okay, so it's basically two and a half miles.
So, you know, the first step for most of these segments is to have VDOT take a look to see if it is a candidate, and Mr. Atkins brought up the rural rustic road program, and that is the program we're, we're using to improve roads to a lesser standard than the normal secondary road standard. But there are limits on, on the type of road and the width and geometry that is acceptable for that program, and so they would have to look at that. The other step is to look at the number of vehicles that use that road. I did, before the meeting, look up for Castle Mountain, and it appears to just clear the threshold of 50 vehicles per day, which if it doesn't, then that's, you know, that makes it harder for the funding. So they're, you know, part of the way there, but without really looking at the road to know the geometry and the cost, it's premature today to do that, but I think it would be valuable to have VDOT do an analysis on the road to determine what portions of it could be potentially upgraded. There might be, like many of our roads, Horton Hollow, for example, there are portions that can be upgraded and portions that cannot, because of the geometry and the steep cliffs and whatnot, and so then we can identify project segments that could be added to the plan in the future.
So I know that Mr. knows, but if I recall correctly, the, the two-step process that Mr. Curry just described is what you all did on Long Mountain Road, Rock Mills up to Grandview, right? You, you got a traffic count, but then looked at the, the geometry width, et cetera, and disqualified it on that basis, right? And how long, how long does that, a second part of that analysis generally take to determine if, if a road can be paved? Obviously, we have a number of people here really concerned about Castle Mountain. I'm just wondering if you looked at it as you did in my district at Long Mountain Road, just to at least determine whether it would fit the, the technical parameters of this program? Yeah, I'm just like, if you did the same analysis there that you did on Long Mountain Road in my district, what's the timeframe for doing that analysis?
It could be just a few weeks, six times for us to schedule a visit out there and drive the road and look at the certificate, the local, the superintendent on bringing these issues. You know, I make a goal in the program. We try to get ATP of, for everyone who has this program. The goal, a lot of roads, you can't get ATP, or you can't get 16, which for most vehicles is enough or two people that can pass, so we work through 16 and 18, we try to, we try to get. We can get that for the majority of the road, and it's just a matter of how much, how high the other place, and how much, the invasions you, you have to deal with. So each road is a little different, you know, it's, and these are estimates, 300... And these are estimates, 300,000 miles, maybe 90,000.
Yeah, I just thought it's useful for people to hear what the process is and how long that work takes.
We don't do, the good thing about this program is there are no, you know, about survey of the road now, this is right here, probably near. One that initial survey looks like it's a good candidate. The Walker Road is isolated in the year and others. The Walker Road determined exactly what types of things need to be done to make it, to make it viable. But there are no significant detailed surveys.
Great.
And we're not required to go through the environmental process that we do on a positive, we have to go down the opposite way and things like that. Normally this is gotten done in that third easement. We have to go outside that easement significantly. We wouldn't be permitted to do minor things, but we have to go outside that easement significantly. It will require right-of-place consideration.
So do you mind if I ask you a quick question? Which is that if we add Castleton View Road tonight to this six-year plan, is there stuff in the interim we can do to make sure that those portions of that road in between now and then can be contained and just kept a little bit better? Is that possible?
Castleton View.
Yes, what did I say?
Yes, so the.
And I'm talking about Castleton.
The president of Castleton Volunteer Fire, I don't know their formal name, Company Five, said earlier today that they would really love it to be hard-surfaced, but realized that takes some time. They also asked, can the cadence of road grading be increased, given that it's a public safety issue?
We can look at our study schedules or rating schedules. I hesitate to tell the superintendent to put more effort into one road and that time and money is limited. So if you're putting more emphasis on one and taking away emphasis from others. Certainly, if the board wants to give us direction to do that, we'll be.
I do understand. And I didn't mean to put you on the spot. They're just, they're having an issue with their ambulances and stuff rattling, literally falling on to patients.
Yeah, we'll certainly take a look at it and see what we can do to correct some of that.
Okay, great, okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Maybe do two for one. They both have, do you guys do?
Castle.
They both have Castle.
They're not exactly right next to each other.
Buy one, get one free. That's, that's why I would say like, how long, you know, maybe if it was in two and a half miles.
Well, then I'm going to make a motion to move to adopt the provided resolution adopting the SSYP 2025, 2030 and construction priority list budget 2025 with the following amendment for SR 616 Castleton View Road.
So that would be in the sixth?
Yes.
Put it in this blank?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion of a second.
I'll second that. I just want to confirm that all the other roads and their numbered assignments are staying the same. Is that correct? One be Kaiser Run.
So it's now completed?
Yeah, yeah, in the position of number six.
In the resolution, one's still Kaiser Run, two is Wharton Hollow, three is Pullins Bluff, four Turkey Ridge, and five Sycamore Ridge.
Yep.
Okay, great.
You moved up, Tom.
Number five now.
Three, I think. Or no, you're five, you have it right.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, it's a roll call, please.
Oh, it's roll call, sorry.
I did want to just say one thing real quick. And I really did appreciate President Schrob coming to speak to us today. And I know he probably wishes that maybe that they could be higher placed on the listing. And I just wanted to say, once you get on this list, you do predictably, hopefully move up every year. The only time we've ever really changed the list was when almost every resident of a road showed up to one of these meetings and said, for the love of God, take our road off the list. We don't want to be paved. And so we did make a change that year. But generally, once, once those, once these pieces fall into place, we know people are waiting for these improvements and we do want to deliver them and meet people's expectations. And these people need emergency services too. And these roads are just as bad and in some cases, I imagine, I know worse. And so I, I hope that it helps with emergency service delivery for everyone to just continue doing this in a, in an orderly timed manner.
All right, it's a roll call vote. Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also.
So I, I think the takeaway is that you guys are going to drive Castle Mountain Road and report back.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, one, one follow-up. Could we also get more information as the program evolves about the rural rustic improvement possibilities countywide?
The, the bill that passed this year to allow the secondary road funds for unpaved to, I guess, improve the geometry or grading of gravel roads without hard-surfacing them. So I assume there's going to be some guidelines or engineering number in them or something coming out.
Certainly.
And there might be some roads in this community that would benefit from that. Stay gravel, but have improved geometry or improve something. And then the board at adoption moved the quarterly update to right now. So update, quarterly.
You move it up there, Zane, along the back.
There you go.
Can you all hear me right?
Yep.
Awesome. So good evening, Chair Donahue and board members. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Walter Burke and I'll be speaking to you on behalf of the VDOT Warranted Redency Office tonight. First off, I want to thank everybody for taking the time out of your agenda to put us in here and allow us to provide that quarterly update to you. Since our last quarterly update, we've had some larger snow events throughout the year. And I believe our crews did a fantastic job preparing and responding to those events. Most cases, these large events typically involve several days of preparation and coordination with local emergency response agencies. During these preparation efforts, I cannot speak enough of the communication and coordination that our locally area headquarters did, which was very phenomenal. Other than these events, occasional mobilization, the freezing precipitation that occurred on Thornton Gap and Chester Gap, our maintenance crews have been involved in responding to work requests, gravel road maintenance, tree debris, pavement and drains repairs. They've also assisted in response to emergency callouts such as down trees. And I also wanted to point out the assistance they provided to local EMS in the fires that broke out here within the county. We have also begun updating the second and sixth year plan, as you all have heard, for the FY 25 and 30, where we evaluate several potential routes that included based on their constructability and provide that information back to you all. For the current SSYP, we have completed the first section of Kaiser Run Road. And we are currently preparing to start the second section that goes all the way from the existing gravel section to the end of state, end of state maintenance. We have received all the environmental documents for this and we are currently getting all the construction certifications prepared to start midsummer, around June, July timeframe is what we're looking at right now. The pavement resurfacing program for the 2024 year has kicked off in our redency. For Rappahannock County, we are paving approximately nine miles with plant mix and about almost 10 miles of surface treatments, which totals about 18.7 miles total throughout the county. Including in this paving program, we also have a trench widening project going on Route 522 from 211, which basically starts at 211 and goes into the county, the town limits of Flynn Hill and just outside Flynn Hill, just pull a Hume Road. This is about seven miles total. And this project has roughly been completed as of Friday, according to our construction staff. And however you may see some additional paving work being done on Route 522 in the coming weeks. I believe they're going to start at Route 635 Hume Road and go all the way up to the county line there, as outlined in our.
Walters, are going to be edge rimble strips put into that trench widening section?
Yes, I don't believe those have been done as of yet.
Just confirming that they're coming.
Yep. And then during this last quarter, we have also had several traffic engineering items come into review from the request of Mr. Curry, as well as the Public Safety Committee. Many of these requests have been completed, but two of the larger studies that are ongoing right now are the Route 21 Wrongway Driver Analysis. We're waiting to hear comments back from the County Public Safety Committee on their recommendations of the improvements. And then the other ongoing studies in reference to the improving several intersections on Route 21 for the advanced warning signage, which is currently in our traffic engineering department under review right now. So that is concludes my brief update to you all for the quarterly review. And I'm here to take any questions that you all may have.
Walter, Mark, you remember, I think at a public, public safety meeting end of last year, we had one of our volunteer fire and rescue companies note that the, the new pavement on 211, especially to the east of the town of Washington, created large drop-offs on the side of the road that needed to be filled with gravel. I just want to make sure that that was done, that you went back and, and added gravel to the shoulders in those sections. I think that the, the surface, do you remember this?
It was done, it was done in front of my house.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it was done.
Coincidence.
Isn't that convenient? Did he pull weight with you?
Got to shovel out.
No, they ran the grader the whole way, so.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, I was told about these drop-offs and I couldn't identify them myself. So I just need to confirm that it was looked at and addressed. Okay. And then I had with Mr. Jenkins, I think you were copied on it, pretty detailed, odometer based, 10th mile by 10th mile list of items, Get Brown to Harris Hollow, one end of the other. And I noticed today that a lot of the tree debris was removed, which is great. The last windstorm we had took care of many of the trees that I asked to be removed. So kudos to Mother Nature for that, saving money. But now you got to take the debris away and it looks like that's underway. But in the town of Washington, I'd asked for some striping around a fire hydrant in a parking area, a no parking area on Harris Hollow Road where it intersects with Main Street. It's really become an issue. So I hope that, and that's on the list that I gave to Mr. Jenkins. I hope you'll look at that because of the increased traffic, parking, et cetera, from the little Washington, we're really seeing that intersection become a problem.
I know we've got some, we've got some parking.
Yeah, there are no parking signs, but now I'm hoping that we can put a reminder on the pavement itself because people are disregarding the signs. And there's the law enforcement part of that too, that maybe we can step up. Yeah. But there, I mean, I think a lot of roads, including Harris Hollow and Get Brown, still have many overhanging ash trees that are real hazard. And I know that that's a big job. Is it correct that that's all subcontracted out and it's just a matter of scheduling it?
Yeah, our, we have a employee in our district office who manages the dead tree removal and hazardous tree removal.
Okay.
So typically, when we can't take them down with our area pickles, we refer to his contracts, his contracts. He'll go out and evaluate it and assess the immediacy of the needs. If it's not, immediately, he'll get his schedule.
Okay.
And he's got nine counties.
So it's like the 12-year tree removal plan?
Well, I think it gets a little longer than that.
Okay. Is it, is it, so is that evaluation process something that you initiate? Or like, in my case, I, I gave Mr. Jenkins a list of dead trees that are a threat to, to motor safety.
If you, if you get it to him and he'll assess it himself.
Okay.
He can't, he can't take care of it with his, with his crew.
Okay.
We refer it to our district.
Got it, okay.
Mr. Nesbitt, I've got one quick question for you. Did you guys do a study on Red Oak Mountain Road? You got, I notice a new sign was placed at the bottom of Red Oak Mountain Road.
On what road?
That, that was a sign, that, I forget who requested that.
Oh, it's a, you requested?
Somebody, so there was concerns about motorcycles venturing up that road and then finding out after a little while that it's gravel. And so the sign that was placed was alerting drivers that so far down the road, the pavement ends. I can't remember where that complaint came from.
Yeah, there was no official study done. We just sent those comments over to our traffic engineering department and they went and installed those signs.
Maybe Richard.
And I'd just like to ask, I know the last time you and I emailed about the two spots, 211 and Jeffries Lane, just down from Battle Mountain. It's a turn lane. I didn't know if there was any, I know a couple of people in here today are particularly interested in that spot. So I don't know if there are any updates on that, that stretch of road. I also happen to know there are two brand-new drivers coming out of Jeffries Lane. So I got to look after them. And then the second place is not as urgent, but when it rains like this, water does pool quite a bit at Hackley's Mill and South Pose.
Yeah, did the superintendent did tell me that they did some work out there a few months ago, did open up some small branding pipes. But I think it caused some of the geometry and the material around it was a constant issue. So maybe do something else or whatever up there.
And what about 211 and Jeffries? That you all came out and did something and now it's a little, it's a little messier.
Because that's a drainage.
Yeah. You did a stream, not a stream.
Yeah, they're going to come back out and regrade that ditch that just haven't, that haven't got to put yet, obviously. But they do have plans to get out and regrade that, that whole area. I don't know if it's going to set dry up and it'll be pretty.
Is that the median section where there was a traffic diversion?
Yeah, we had failed pipes there and we had a jacky board and U-pipe in a different location. And I think we observed a spring or something in there called the space. So we got to do some more.
I have two questions for you. When, after winter, it seems is when the grading occurs on the non-paved roads, which makes sense because during the snow, you don't want to waste a lot of gravel and that kind of thing. But roads get graded and then no stone gets put on them. And right now, they're really fun to drive on if you want to slide around. So I'm wondering what the process is and timeline when you, between the grading and the putting down some gravel, so you're not sliding all over.
So I'd say this time of year, we, you know, with the freezing thawing coming right out of the winter, we're going to have a lot of muddy, mud on the gravel roads. But typically, when they go in and grade and they, you know, the superintendent or supervisor out there, they'll gauge if it needs the application of stone. If you guys get requests or concern from citizens where there's a lack of stone, please let us know and we'll coordinate with them.
I guess, as I have a few.
Okay.
I mean, it is a double-edged sword. You can have too much gravel and then it'll washboard.
Do the same thing.
So VDOT is always trying to manage that balance between a situation that's going to immediately washboard and one that's mud slick.
Like, so this is probably the worst time of year, when, you know, when the road is starting to thaw out from the winter.
Especially with the thunderstorms and everything happening now. You're getting all that water. The other one, Hiddle's Mill, would be a good one to look for the tree removal. We've had a lot of very large trees come down. And they're not on the road, but they're right beside the road and that road gets narrow.
So they've already fallen?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so just to clean up. Anybody else? Nope.
Well, that's an easy list, right?
Yeah, I bet.
Thank you so very much.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nesbitt.
We know you don't do any credit, but we do appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
And you're very responsive, so thanks for that.
All right, I think we are moving into the public hearing on the temporary signs. This would be a good opportunity, if you're not interested in the temporary signs conversation, to give you a couple of minutes to get out.
Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara.
Good to see everyone.
Thanks, Rod.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, as it says on the agenda, this is an informal public hearing. The board asked to hear from the citizens and I really do appreciate all the people in the room. Do you want to kick it off?
Yeah, I've placed the public hearing notice on the screen. At least we can have three. And this public hearing notice was specifically drafted to not try to lead thought and to identify what the board can and can't do in an ordinance. So temporary signs need to essentially be regulated consistently regardless of the message on the sign. So it doesn't matter if it's a true. it doesn't matter if it's a church sign, political sign, or a sign for the fruit stand. They have to be consistent rules. And those rules can, can try to frame in the quantity and impact of signs through a number of different ways. Perhaps by the number that are allowed per parcel or per frontage, road frontage, the size, area and height, the material of the sign, location of a sign relative to property lines, setbacks. You can have different rules in different zoning districts. So an agricultural district might have a certain rules, but a commercial district have different, other rules. And then often of concern here is whether there can be wind driven motion, feather flags, open flags, whirlygigs, things like that. Should they be allowed or not? And what is not mentioned here, and what is totally prohibited in the current ordinance and everything I've heard from the future ordinance, would be signs that have lights that blink. I've heard anybody on the board think that they want to move in that direction, so it's not even referenced here, although that also could be considered a temporary sign. So with, with those sorts of constraints available to the board, some, none, or all of those could be applied in different ways. And it really depends on the perspective of the public or the business owner on what is appropriate. Eventually, input received from the public will inform future ordinance, draft ordinances that are then placed back before the public for a public hearing. This is just an opportunity for the board to hear you.
All right. Anyone wishing to speak five minutes or less, please, because there's quite a few people here, please be recognized and come up. Yes, ma'am.
Sherry Fickle, Pinmont District. I actually do run a business, two businesses here, and we do put out some temporary signs, but, and it's in Sperryville. I've seen recently, and I guess in the last couple of years, a lot more temporary signs going up, and I mean in the VDOT right of way, in the median strip. And they're not all nicely done sandwich boards, and I know we can't regulate content, but it's starting to look, frankly, a little trashy. And I'm a business owner, and I want to advertise my business. I need to pull people in. But we need to be consistent and thoughtful and respectful when, in doing that, to promote our own business. There is, there are, and I, I think, so I'd like some thought about this. I know a lot of this is enforcement, too. I get that. But if you don't have the rule, there's no hope of enforcing it. So I think there, there could be things like, like, I put out temporary signs, and I put them out when my business is open, and I take them down at the end of the shift, and I put them back out when I open, and take them back down. And so, yes, they're temporary signs, but they're not there all when I'm closed, they're not there blowing in the wind, they're not being blown away, they're, they're just very much saying, I'm open. There is a temporary, or signage program with VDOT that I'm sure you guys are familiar with, those blue signs. The problem with this is you can't get one of those if you're open fewer than five days. And we run a tourism business, we have a county that promotes tourism, that is primarily on four or five days a week at most. And it's really hard sometimes to keep a business open five days, whether that's for staffing or just because the business isn't there. And there's a lot of things that could change that, but that's the state it's at. Also, those directional sign, those signs are very expensive. I, we're on them, and we're on it. And it took me a long while to finally feel like I was successful enough as a business owner that I could afford those signs. We're talking hundreds, I mean, it's about a thousand dollars a year I pay for those signs. And that is not cheap. So, in that way, I think they're a great idea, because that means businesses can advertise all in the same place, it's consistent, it does direct people, people learn to look at them, to understand where businesses are. But the cost and that five day thing really prohibits the use of that. So I don't know, probably impossible for the county to try its own program that maybe creates some consistency, but doesn't have that, that requirement. Or if it's just a cost thing, and this is probably absolutely ridiculous, if the county could help subsidize some of the starting out businesses that might need a little help. As I said, it took me a long time before I felt like I could afford, afford that. So just a few ideas on that, on that sort of business advertising. As far as temporary signs in general, I know that they run the gamut of political signs to just, hey, it's very fast. And weighing that, it seems like maybe sixty days is about the most. That's a lot for, that's good for an election, and that's what I think of. Everything else should be, if it's a temporary sign, it should be temporary. It is something coming up this weekend, it's some, sixty days, maybe that is apple season, but, you know. So I, I think going a hundred and twenty days or longer, it, it doesn't, that's, you're not temporary anymore. Also, as far as motion signs, I personally really don't like those feather signs, and when you put five of them in front of a business, it really takes away from the charm and the character of the county that we're trying to project. But I can also understand in something like highway commercial, that might be more useful. But when you're talking about a village, I think that that starts to take away from the character of the villages that we are really trying to, and that's what brings people here. Of course, I'm only focusing on tourism. So I would like to, pretty much, if you're going to allow those motion signs or, or think about them, I think highway commercial would be the place to limit them to. And I know that would also restrict flags, and it's nice to have an open flag out, and it's hard to enforce. I don't know if there are exceptions you can make for that, because flags are less intrusive than the feather signs are, and usually fewer in number. Not always, though. And then my last comment is, as far as material, I know we can have plywood and plastic and hay bales. I don't know why it matters what a sign is made of. If, if you want to restrict a sign and the size of message that somebody can project to peep, to the public, in public view, then what material it's on should not be important. So, and I think that just causes a lot of complications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, good evening. Dick Deakins, Stonewall District. I just spent fifty years in the building business, and we had one job sign if we were lucky. I didn't need it, I didn't depend on it. I've now gone to a, a smaller scale operation, as you know, I'm now the ice cream guy in Rappahannock County. So signs are my lifeblood. And if I have, and I have to rely on off-site signs. And if one of those signs blows down, I can look at the sales for that day, it goes almost zero. This, this county's in flux, it's in constant movement, and I have become an authority on two eleven westbound. I've watched it for five months last year, I've changed locations this year, and I'm watching it again. We're not quite a destination yet, they're passing through fast. And the only way we can get them to slow down and come into our business is, is to provide signage of some sort. I think there's enough enforcement agencies around it, we don't need a sign police to sit there and monitor everything that we're, that we're doing. And quite frankly, and all of you are involved, I think the most offensive part of this signage situation are the political signs. I mean, you've got second coming sized signs out of your district. Each one of you have about fourteen hundred people in your district. And I find them way all, all around the county that are not at all related to the district that they're trying to, to gain votes in. And they're, they're pretty good sized signs this past induction season. This all started with the mural, and I'm gonna call it a mural, I think it's a great piece of folk art in Sperryville. I think it's, it's kind of a timeless sign that, that advertised Main Street. And I, and the, and the, and the Farmers for Trump, that's what started igniting this whole thing. And I agree with this last lady, I mean, it doesn't make any difference what content it is, and if you've got a hundred acres, you want to fill that freaking thing with a hundred acres of sign, so be it. It's temporary. So we're the lifeblood, the small business organizations are the lifeblood of this county. And, and don't restrict us in already difficult, we don't have huge population, we don't have Clevinger's Corner, or we don't have a downtown Warrenton where there's tens of thousands of cars coming through here. But, so, it's a lifeblood, just kind of consider that when you pass these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Hi, my name is Melissa Schooler. I'm a small business owner in the Jackson District, and I'm also the treasurer of the businesses of Rappahannock. Businesses of Rappahannock, and our members are not necessarily opposed to regulations governing signage, because our local business owners want to keep our community scenic and rural. These are just two of the reasons that visitors are attracted to Rappahannock County. We would, however, like to point out that temporary signs and permanent signs, which isn't really part of the discussion, but are a big help to the visibility of the small businesses, especially if they're off a main road. By developing business friendly regulations, our local businesses can utilize signs responsibly while still reaping the benefits of increased visibility, advertising, and revenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. I'm Matthew Black from Pinmont. I'd like to give, offer another perspective, not, not a business or a small business, but nonprofit. I represent RAC, which is the Rappahannock Associates for Arts and Community. And temporary signs come into play for us for special events. And two in particular, as a way of example, would be the annual art tour in the first week of November. We now have maybe a couple thousand people attending that event, draws a lot of people from out of town. And another would be our summer concerts. And we use temporary signs in two different ways, but they, they overlap a lot. For the summer concert series, we, we use small two by three, or, and I think that's, wouldn't be a problem. We put those up usually the day before or the day of the event, we take them down that evening, certainly the next morning. And those signs are used to say, they say something like, concert today, or concert postponed because of rain, or it's parking, no parking, that kind of thing. For the art tour, that's a bit more complicated. A key sign for us are these banners. They're three feet by eight feet. They're sufficient size so that motorists can see them. When you're driving fast, you need big print, otherwise it becomes a hazard. So we usually, we, we post those up about a week before the event, and then we take them down the next day after the event. So that's one kind of temporary sign. And we think those are really important, particularly for out of towners coming in. And I think because of our tourism plan, that we want to encourage them to have a good experience when they come to Rappahannock. And part of that is getting here safely and also finding the venues. And the venues tend to be, not tend to be, they're, they're, they focus on artist studios and galleries. So that leads to a second kind of sign, and that is a directional sign. And these studios, as well as the galleries, are scattered all over the place. And so we will put, we have a map, everybody gets a map, either online or they can print it out. But as they get closer to a particular studio, then we have some, some signs that say studio ahead, some arrow signs. Again, those are put up the day of, and for the most part, they're taken down later that day, or the day after the event. And this is a two day event, it's a weekend event. Those are the primary, primary uses for temporary signs for us. I think farm tours, similar, some of the other events. Sometimes they're fundraising events where we need banners to both announce and direct participants. So I think the one in particular, that's sort of the big guy, would be our three by, three by eight banners. And so our request would be for that somehow to be included, however you decide to word it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matthew.
I'm not here, Rod McCall, Jackson District. I'm not here representing RAC, but just to, to unpack up and, and add to what Matthew has had to say, is that another issue on temporary signs is where they're placed, in that, well, most of them are placed in public right of ways, and that's not really addressed in the ordinance. And I, and I think that, that somehow needs to be addressed, and, and something done on the type of situation where weekend events or whatever, that they're allowed, but only for a very brief period of time. And that way, everybody knows what the rules are, and, and, and we can still go ahead and, and promote local activities and everything. But at the same time, there are certain businesses that have signs in the public right of way, and I went and buy one today, and I counted the signs, twenty. And those signs are in your district, and they, it's been like five years. On, and they're in the median, they're in the public right of way, both sides, you know, leading into this business. And it's not enforced. And, and you can, the problem we have, and it's, it's, you know, it's always been the way it's been enforced, is it's, it's on complaint basis. But in those situations, it shouldn't be. I mean, zoning administrator, building official, whatever, they're going down the road, it's an obvious violation. They, they, you know, they need to step up and, and take action on these. I, I did, when, when John McCarthy was here, I would at times, I would, you know, somebody would put up a, a sign someplace or whatever, and I would see it. And I would talk to John, and he'd go, okay, and he'd write him a letter, and the sign would go away. But since he left, it's, it's very difficult to, to file a complaint and see any action taken. I've, I've done that also recently. And so it's, we can have our sign ordinance, and we've had a sign ordinance for years, but I dare say, well over fifty percent of the signs in the county don't meet the ordinance. And, and how many of them actually have a permit? So, so we need to work on that at the same time where we're redoing the sign ordinances, that there's got to be some, some type of enforcement that works. Because otherwise, you know, we can, we can go, go ahead and redo it, and we'll be in the same place we are right now, in that, you know, it's been, it's, the president signed ordinance for like fifty years or something like that, and it's rarely been enforced. So we really need to look at that as part of what we're doing here, or we're kind of spinning our wheels. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do. And I know you do a lot. And this is, it's dragged on a long time. The.
Rick Kohler, Jackson District.
I'm sorry, Rick Kohler, Jackson District.
Is that the one?
I'm, I'm the guy that forgot to bring a raincoat. The, first of all, I represent RLEP as president. RLEP stands by its previous statement, which I think you have record of from when this was done before. I think that there's been a lot of good statements here tonight that all are, are very valid in many ways. And, and so it is really a lot to, to think about, to try to create an ordinance and satisfy everyone, and also keep the county beautiful. So RLEP has, we would hope to, we plan to provide a brief from our point of view, that we hope you'll be able to utilize, and hopefully it will help in the process. That is started, but we're not ready to do that yet. The, so I think that's, this is a great process, it's, and I hope that we can come to something that will, we do need a sign ordinance, so we've got to do it. If I may, I'd like to just speak for myself personally, and, is that okay? And I would like to just say that I, I think it's going in a, in a good direction, and I do have a concern about separating some signs out from other signs that are temporary and creating a whole different category. I just think that a temporary sign is a temporary sign, and we need to keep them all together and all under the same, under the same roof. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
My name is Karen Hunt. I live in Jackson District. I appreciate that the board wants additional feedback from citizens tonight regarding the current proposed sign ordinance, particularly regarding temporary signs. It bears repeating that the whole premise for updating the sign ordinance is to comply with the Reed-Gilbert decision. Somehow, this has morphed into proposed changes that create several new sign categories and significantly increase the amount of signage that would be permitted throughout the county. The overwhelming public comment has expressed the desire to not expand our sign ordinance beyond the limits of our current ordinance wherever possible. But the proposal before you currently, unless it's modified, goes well beyond the limits that have been in place for decades. There was a very well-attended hearing August 10th of 2023. There's been a petition signed by 77 residents across all five districts expressing concerns about proposed areas of expansion. I printed copies tonight for the board as I thought it might be helpful, especially since Supervisor Comer had not yet joined the board when it was originally submitted. I also provided a handout for the board of examples of signage that currently violates our ordinance just along a short stretch of 211 between Amesville and before 522. It includes several large signs in the median strip, which is illegal under any circumstance, a fairly recent new billboard advertisement for Loray Caverns, a sign nailed to a tree, which tests the definition of temporary, with one business having at least 14 individual signs. There are also examples of prohibited animated signage in Amesville and recent, recently posted advertising signs on Viewtown Road. This is just a small collection of what is obvious to me in just a small area of the county that I see regularly without going out of my way to look for it. And I regret that I did not take a picture of the hand painted "I buy junk cars" that is nailed to the telephone pole right before you get to 211. My perception is that we have not been enforcing our sign ordinance for quite a while now, even in situations that are clear of any Reed-Gilbert implication. And so people keep putting up more and more, maybe without realizing that they shouldn't because they see others doing it. We do not want to be expanding the number, size, and duration of temporary signs. The fact that there are signs out there that violate our current zoning ordinance is not a reason to expand it and allow them now. They are not compatible with our rural scenic county. We should keep the current limits of one sign with a 30-day limit and a possible 30-day extension. I'll just say as an aside, I was heartened to hear a lot of the comments here tonight from responsible business owners or RAC, people who are putting signs up, being very mindful of the intent that they're there and then taking them down. And I think that needs to be applauded. Unfortunately, not everybody does that. We should not simply take what had been the upper limit for wayside stands and apply it across the board. The size, scope, and duration of what is the current proposal is excessive, and I urge the board to reconsider that. The medium of a temporary sign, as in hay, should not be the basis for granting what amounts to a carve-out for those with access to a particular type of format in a particular location. I've used myself as an example. I shouldn't ask, be able to ask my farmer to stack my hay bales in front of my property on Viewtown when others don't have that opportunity. We should not be providing a select minority with a huge megaphone for the purposes of circumventing size limits placed on other types of temporary signage. There is significant public concern about the proposed expansion of off-premises signs, temporary signs, including hay bale signs, the exclusion of art and certain flags from the ordinance, allowing animated commercial zone signs, vehicle signs, and other miscellaneous provisions. We don't need to add a new expansive definition for flags. We need to simply regulate size and number and leave it at that. We do not currently permit animated signs. Again, the fact that there are examples out there that violate our current ordinance is not a reason to expand it to allow them now. They are not compatible with our rural scenic county. Citizens submitted specific comments in a red line draft to the board in September of 2023 and again in March of 2024 detailing changes that better suit our county and reflect protection of our scenic resources in accordance with our comp plan. The public has asked that citizens, the citizen recommendations be included in any proposed language going forward to be considered by the board. Citizens are saying to you, please do not expand our ordinance beyond the limits of our current ordinance. Don't increase the number of signs, the aggregate square footage, heights, or duration. Do not create new categories of signage that will allow expansion. And please incorporate citizen feedback into the proposed language being considered. People care. We want to preserve and protect what we have here. We are scenic county. We value the natural beauty of Rappahannock. We don't want our sign ordinance expanded, and we don't want our zoning ordinance expanded. We are asking you to please keep Rappahannock Rappahannock. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did just want to mention, I know this is a public hearing, but there's a picture of the Amesville Volunteer Fire Department signing here, and we've cured that with a special exception.
Yeah, I'm not sure--
I just wanted to mention that that, that is not an outstanding issue.
That, that, that sign was not put up before they got their permit?
That's correct.
Yeah, it was never out, it was never in violation.
That's correct. Thank you, Gary. Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted a point of clarification and for the board members that were not members when we did that business.
Good call.
Thank you very much.
Any others?
Yes, sir.
Tony Van Acker from the Stonewall Hawthorne District. I'd just like to echo the comments from the previous speaker. I think this, I was, I was reading through materials that was posted on the agenda. There was a PowerPoint presentation, it was a little summary of what is changing, what is not changing. And the thing that surprised me was the discussion about public art. What, I think it's, the option one is, is as proposed is where you determine if it's a sign, and if it's not, then just let it be. But what happens if somebody puts up offensive art? What happens if somebody decides he wants to build the world's biggest corn cob and put it on the side of the road, write "Rappahannock" on it? I mean, you go out in the Midwest, you find towns that do those types of things. You want that to happen in Rappahannock? The, the code, the ordinance doesn't seem to address those things, should it? We talk about hay bales. Personally, I'm not offended by hay bales. I think it's a part of the rural character of the county. It's what people put on the hay bales that gets people upset. And that's why this whole issue is before the board. Why 25 bales? Is because you can't say anything bad in less than 25? I think you can take 10 letters, and you can say some pretty bad things. You can't regulate civility or decency. I mean, it'd be nice to have hay bales that says, "We love Rappahannock County." That would be a great tourist attraction. So anyway, just a couple of things like that, and as far as number and quantity that I think that was previously covered. One thing I'd like to add is, let's not have any lighting of temporary signs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Catherine Ishi, Piedmont. So first, thank you very much for the opportunity for the public to make additional comments this evening on the topic of temporary signs. It's been a long night, and I never fully understand how you can sit and listen to public comments for hours and hours. So thank you very much for attempting to still absorb. You've received already extensive comments from myself and others on this topic, including a letter dated August 21st, 2023, signed, as has been already stated, by approximately 75 residents of the county, as well as red line comments offered by myself and others interested, other interested citizens dated September of 2023. The gist of these comments is that we do well understand the need for businesses to be able to advertise their products by signs. We also really understand the importance of being able to communicate ideas and opinions, including at the time of elections, through signs. All of us understand that, and that's important, you know, I think, across the board. However, for several decades, we've been operating fairly well, it seems, with rules in place that allow for these important functions while still preserving the natural and scenic qualities of our landscape, both for residents and for visitors. I once more repeat the advice of a, of a renowned urban planner by the name of Edward T. McMahon, who says, and I quote, "Controlling outdoor signs is probably the most important step a community can take to make an immediate visible improvement in its physical environment." Almost all America's premier tourist destinations have strong sign ordinances because they understand that attractive communities attract more businesses than ugly ones. And I think that's kind of what we're talking about, basically. Our sign ordinance is certainly not the most restrictive in the, in the country, or probably even in the state or region, but it's reasonable. And while we need to revise it to meet current legal standards, that doesn't mean we should weaken it. If there are specific situations where businesses find that they need additional signness, signage more than is otherwise allowed, maybe we should consider that through special exceptions if necessary, rather than opening up the county writ large to a proliferation of every imaginable advertisement. That diminishes the effectiveness of the signs themselves and surely diminishes our brand as a scenic county that is an historic gateway to the Shenandoah National Park. The advertised topic for tonight's hearing is temporary signage, and that's covered at some length in both letters I just mentioned, which we already have, so I won't go over these comments here. However, I would recommend that as important and commendable as it is to hold these additional public hearings as you're doing to elicit more clearly citizen comments, it might be really worthwhile to suggest, to consider a roundtable discussion on this particular ordinance, which might be beneficial for a number of reasons. Primarily because many of the proposed, many areas of the proposed draft are not actually entirely clear. This is fully understandable, given the complexity of the requirements and the still draft nature of the proposal. However, it does mean that some of the suggested changes must also be somewhat preliminary as the intent of the proposed language may have been missed. If we have the opportunity to sit down and kind of give a, a give and take in a very informal setting, that, that might just clear up a number of the questions that people have and actually come up with a more consensus draft. But bottom line on this is, I do think that it is very important to have signage, obviously, in the county, but we should stick to our, you know, what we have and not try to expand it beyond, at least not significantly beyond what we have. I, I was intrigued by what others have brought up about the fact that it's not easy to get on these VDOT Blue signs. But I know that there are, because the county doesn't have to regulate itself, it can be, it doesn't have to be content neutral. So if the county were to put up, I know we've seen in other jurisdictions, if you go into tourist communities, they have these very attractive signs with the sign pointing this direction to Mr. Deacon's Ice Cream, and this direction to, you know, Tables Made Daily, and this direction. So maybe the county could consider ways to help businesses have attractive signage that really focuses folks rather than a bunch of signs all over the place that just distracts attention. Just thoughts like that might be useful to consider. Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Diane Bruce, Berryville. I think that what Ms. Hunt said and everybody else has said tonight is appropriate. I think that our ordinance should not be expanded, more signs pro lot. And I also think that we really need to figure out a way to enforce what we have. Enforcement would make a big, big change that would be welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
Sharon Luke, Piedmont District. Came in a little late, so I didn't hear all of the comments, but all those that I heard, I thought were well thought out, and I appreciate everybody that's come to speak this evening and those of you that are listening carefully. I particularly liked Karen Hunt and M.K. Ishi's thoughtful and careful, thorough comments. So I, I ask you to please consider those. And my personal thought is that not, do not expand the signs in the county. We want to keep it, I think, as beautiful and scenic as we have been, but we also understand we need some signs for the businesses. I really like what RAC does. They put up their signs, they take their signs down quickly. So that's, that maybe should be taken into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Tommy Atkins, Jackson District. A couple of comments about hay bales. I believe that we are pro-ag and tourism, this county is. Those hay bales are come from the ground, they are agricultural products. Those white rapids that they put around those are put on there to preserve that hay. And they certainly led a lot of tourism to come to the county to look at those hay bales at Mass's Corner. There was a lot of tourists came, there was a lot of money spent in this county. The Rappahannock News sold more newspapers during that time than they've ever sold. He wasn't here then, but he did. It was more, it was more Rappahannock News sold during that time. Even some of them got sent to the White House, of course. A lot of people didn't like that. But that is a positive note about, and those farmers have a right to their freedom of speech as well. I'm not hung up on the number of bales, but those bales did do good for Rappahannock County. Probably a lot more, two years of money was spent here in that county during that time and a lot of other things that goes on in this county. Now, as far as what VDOT, is in VDOT's right of way, I don't know if we have any authority to, to address those. One is, this infamous dog kennel at the intersection of O'Hallow Road and 211, which is on the scenic highway of 211 that leads to the Shenandoah National Park, which is that biggest tourism draw that we have. They've had a RV pull tag trailer sitting up on the shoulder, near the shoulder of the road for over two months with a for sale sign on it. Nothing's been done about it. They also have a 100-gallon watering tub sitting up down the same way. And when the wind gets real high, it blows that tub all around. Nothing's been done about it. It's been reported to a lot of people. It's been reported to VDOT, been reported to the county. So if we can't do nothing about that, I don't think we can do anything about other things of VDOT, VDOT right of way. And I also think that we need to look, I don't think this can necessarily be covered in a sign ordinance, but we need to look and have a concern, what's allowed on our scenic highways? What kind of business and how they keep that business running? If it's well-kept, it's certainly this, again, this infamous dog kennel is certainly not a draw to Rappahannock County and to the Shenandoah National Park. If any of you don't believe that, to go out there. They now have a, they have a pigpen. Ninety-degree days and humid weather, beautiful, sweet aroma. So somebody ought to go out and check that out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy.
Anyone else? All right. I do see one name on Zoom. If you're interested in speaking with regards to the temporary signs, please raise your Zoom hand. All right. Not seeing a hand raised, I'll go ahead and-- All right, not seeing a hand raised, I'll go ahead and close the informal public comment.
One thing that Tommy just hit on, and I deal with in my, I enforce in my own way, these signs that have proliferated and that are in the VDOT right of way. It occurs to me that we could take care of a lot of sign clutter before we even talk about our ordinance. And that's just, we need to work with VDOT and come up with a plan, what our protocol is for removing signs that end up in the right of way that I think everyone keeps repeating they're not legal by any measure. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so go to Sperryville. And I think Ms. Fickell pointed out earlier tonight, I mean, there are intersections in Sperryville that are absolutely chunked up. And, I mean, when I'm on my way to Flatwood, I do my own part and I take a few signs with me because it's, I do. Because they don't belong there, and I know that. Same thing around the town of Washington. So I think if we, if we're smart about it, we probably cut down, even before we talk about the nuance of ordinance language vis-à-vis signs and what we want and what we don't want, we just clean up the county by coming up with a plan. It's not even enforcement because they're not legal. So how do we coordinate sort of a steady addressing of these signs in highway rightaways? And that'll take care of a lot of the clutter right off the bat. And then we just need to stick to that plan and do it. So I don't know who does that. I don't know if we can work out something with VDOT. I don't know if we have to pay for it.
I'll contact VDOT. I believe they have some regulation on the matter.
Yeah, because I think it's gotten to the point that people just do it, and then nothing gets done about it, so people add more. But lately, it's absolutely out of control.
Yeah.
Years ago, about May, years ago, VDOT would take buyers home back for $5, or they'd store them for so long at the place. And if you want your sign back, you go find it and pay it and get it back. Otherwise, it got thrown in the bin.
Yeah, it's too bad we didn't have this conversation while Mr. Nosvid were here. Yeah, that's what I, I mean, that's common sense right there. So I think, I think it's important that we tackle the obvious problem, which is all of that clutter. And our county deserves better than that clutter. We deserve a lot better than that. And I think we can find a practical way to address it.
Thank you. I did mention to Gary at one point that I thought either once or twice a year we could have a refresh Rappahannock, you know, a couple of days where everybody knows if it's in the right of way or whatever, we're coming after your sign, get rid of it. Just, you know, kind of a fall and spring type frame, timeframe, where you just know it's going to happen that weekend and we can make it a Rappahannock event or something and count your signs you collect or whatever, I don't know. But I just think if we do it annually and the neighbors and the citizens get engaged with it, it becomes more almost fun than tedious. Contest. I like contests. Any other thoughts?
I thought, I thought Ms. Fickell's comment about highway commercial zone makes sense. I'm not a big fan of the fluttering feather signs at all, but if those, if those are, if we can comply with Reed v. Gilbert and come up with an ordinance that is zoning district specific, we do have a very limited highway commercial zone. I think if we were doing this 40 years ago, maybe we would have approached that whole highway commercial zone differently in terms of the signs that are now there, but that's too late. Now it's too late. Going forward, I think we just have to, I'm stating the obvious here, but just strike a balance. I mean, we also don't need to junk up one district in our county, but I think we need to allow those businesses to operate within reason with reasonable signage.
Gary, could you pull up that current draft language on feather signs? Because I think that's actually how it's written. Because we didn't envision that in villages, certainly. We didn't envision it in agriculture. We envisioned it in...
Commercial, I think, is the way it's written. So commercial general, commercial highway, and industrial. Of course, industrial, we only have one small parcel.
So we were, you know, certainly for that carve out, realizing that a lot of people dislike those signs. And they are, I don't want to say they're an eyesore, but the only real purpose for them is if people are going so fast that they need something large to identify the business. And those are the areas where the speed limits are higher. So that's where we carved out for those signs to be allowed.
Yeah, there was some discussion tonight about feather versus flag, and maybe flags are better than feather. And I think you can get at that with height and size restrictions if you wanted to. I think this was allowing 15 feet in height, and you could cut that down in eight feet or something, which you could have maybe a reasonable sized flag, but not a reasonable sized feather. It depends on whether there's any real distinction there in view shed, I don't know. I do think it would be very difficult for us to police open flags. It just seems obscene that someone can't have an open flag because they're everywhere. But we're not allowed to differentiate anymore.
Well, and there's also the question of enforcement. And I think this is an important point to touch on, especially with some of the points that Mr. Black brought up this evening. I know you and Barbara put up the signs pretty much when the event starts and when the weekend wraps up, because I've seen you putting up the signs and taking down the signs. So by the time there's a complaint, there's no enforcement because it's already abated. So, I mean, there are, there are these things that will resolve themselves, where we don't have to write ourselves into circles, circles can, you know, to solve a problem that will be resolved before it's even reported, or the emails read on Monday morning. So I do think that there are things we need to recognize, you know, aren't really a problem and do make the diligent carve outs where it makes the most sense.
If I can review correctly, I think time is an important factor, too. The longer that a sign is out there, the more problematic it can become, given its location, its size, its whatever. And so if it's there for a short period of time, less of a problem. If it's there for months, it can be, it can be useless.
Yeah, and I think there's usually a 30-day period where that you're given an opportunity to come into compliance. So, you know, if you're just putting it up for your weekend event and taking it right down, you're going to be abated by the end of the weekend. So, you know, a lot of these problems just solve themselves. And they're not really what we're trying to get at with the ordinance. We were trying to basically allow the things that have been going on for a long time that there haven't been complaints about, and to address the things that there have been complaints about and allow footing for there to be enforcement for those items.
There are plenty of people in the room who haven't been here in other meetings. And so I want to make sure the staff, Mr. Goff, and myself, and I think Mr. Goff kind of thought of this, for enforcement for these temporary signs and permanent signs, is that they will have, they would have to bear the date of first display on the sign, on the reverse side, on the front side, and that would be the trigger for the duration, whatever the duration is. And so we just don't have that now. The language now is not enforceable. So if people say, if we just enforce the rules we have, well, we can't. It's just not enforceable. Not in a way that could convince a judge in this room that somebody's violated and spend all the money to do that. And so the theory here is that we would be, have a much better line to enforce what is ultimately adopted. And we're trying to make it practical so that Michelle can very easily review a sign and determine whether it's in acceptable or in violation. Yeah.
The problem with RAC and the signs that we put out is that basically what you're saying is, yeah, it's illegal to put them out, but it's okay because it's not going to be enforced. And we should be put in that position. But if there should be, in those type of events or whatever, there should be an affirmative issue that just allows, you know, allows those signs to remain available and they go up and down. And there doesn't have to be, and it's not as good a process or whatever. But we, the organization should be put in a situation where by fact of putting out the signs, it is illegal, but don't worry about it. We shouldn't run our sign ordinance that way.
I don't think anybody said that. I think any temporary sign duration is likely to be more than a day or a week or two days.
Then you end up in compliance.
But we can't set different rules for RAC signs versus somebody else's.
You've got to read it, you're a RAC sign, then you're violating town versus guild. Guild versus group, or whatever that is.
I see a way of doing this where we would just limit temporary signs. We can do it by zoning district. So we can just say, in commercial, industrial, which is one, highway commercial, yada, yada, village commercial, you can have X, and we limit it. And then in all other areas, you get X, and you limit the size. It's Y or whatever. But it could be the same, I meant, just meant it could be the same size. But you get less of them. You can do that.
Yeah, you can have different durations.
And the way that ours is currently set up, minus the content policing, is, in a way, it's like everybody gets one temporary sign, which I don't remember the last time people had one temporary sign that was, anyway. Before I go down that rabbit hole, I don't see a huge barrier here to figuring out something where in agriculturally zoned, residential zoned areas, you know, keep the temporary signs super limited. And in commercial zones, you get more. I mean, it just seems pretty obvious to me. And we can limit it in terms of the flags if we want to, or the feather signs, we could say, well, you know, like Mr. Curry was saying, instead of it being, what was it, say, 15 feet?
Yeah, well, this is draft.
Yeah, you get, you get eight feet or whatever, and then you can just, you can start paring it down to something that might just fit more of what we currently have. I mean, I think, I've talked to a lot of members of the business community who honestly have, aside from Mr. Deacons, who have not showed up to say that they really rely on signs. I've gone and talked to them. And there's a lot of folks that want signs, and they live on them. And they work here in the county and live here in the county. They don't leave the county. And we've got to balance that. And so my struggle is to kind of figure out how to do that in a way that works and it doesn't sort of clutter up even what they're trying to do. In those tourist zones where you go through and you can't see anything because it's just a ton of signs, and you're just sign fatigue. But in this concept, I think that we could just really zone in and focus in on what districts we would find it appropriate to kind of, like the commercial general, commercial highway, and industrial zones, and really just kind of industrial. Commercial general, commercial highway, maybe village commercial, and then say, okay, well, let's start there.
Well, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Village commercial tends to be smaller lots. So we didn't feel at the planning commission that the intensity of the number of signs to be commensurate with other commercial.
Very tight.
Yes, like half acre or quarter acre lots. You don't want to see multiple, you know, more than one or two signs for those smaller lots. I just, I also would say, something we were mindful of at the planning commission is that a lot of our farms and orchards that are located in agriculturally zoned districts and have farm stores on them rely on signage to get people to their store. And we took into consideration two draft language that we felt would allow them to largely keep the signage that they have, but not give them additional opportunities for signage. So...
And there was a special exception for off-premise, right?
And yeah, you can do a special exception, but a lot of these farms have had these temporary signs for years and years. And they rely on them. And not only that, but I think when people come out to the county, they look forward to seeing them. I know I look forward to seeing them every year when certain things come into season. And some of them, I think, are almost like folk art. And I would hate for them to go away because we drafted a sign ordinance that was too restrictive.
Yeah, and I think that's off-premises farming operations, like Japanese maple, right? I mean, because your location, you've got to, you've got to let people know how to get there.
That's how people find us.
Right, of course, yeah.
But we put signs out four weekends a year, and they go away.
I know, and I was just going to hold that up as a perfect example of the way it should work. And it occurs to me, just what Mr. Carney was saying, you know, if we focus on zone-specific allowances, it could have, it could have the effect of discouraging people from throwing businesses that don't know the rules and don't know what they're allowed to do or not do from throwing signs up in rights of way all over the county. I mean, there's one business that I've seen signs all up and down 211, and they're on the far west end of Rappahannock County with signs going all the way to the east. I think if we have clear rules and they're reasonable and everyone can accept them and live with them, and not everyone's going to be happy, hopefully it will give business owners clear guidance on what they can and cannot do, and then hopefully reduce the clutter that's just thrown out there because people don't know the rules.
So in our current sign ordinance, you know, it says, "A maximum of two directional signs shall be allowed per commercial industrial establishment, including farms, if the establishment is not located on primary highway." Which is kind of where I was going with this, is that there are ways of pulling out certain things to allow people to do what they're currently doing.
Yeah, so that's incorporated in the current draft. But directional is Smith's Produce That Way. That's what directional sign is. Not, "This time of year, we have cantaloupes. This time of year, we have cabbage. That time of year, we have corn." That becomes something more than a directional sign. And directional signs are specifically kind of pulled out of this whole... You can handle those separately. But once you start to see that other message, that becomes a problem. And so that's why the conceived draft from staff said, "Okay, you can have your directional signs if you have a, if you're off of a primary, you can have that."
Right.
And if you need to tell people your, a message of why they want to go to you because you have apples or this, that, or the other thing, you can ask for a special exception. But you only have a right to do that if you have a sign on your current parcel. Right? You have to have a sign permit for your parcel where your farm is. And then that makes you eligible to have that off-premise sign, which excludes all the people who don't have parcels here, right? You know, the Lou Ray Caverns can't do that.
Right, but I think that that was a way of getting at what we're trying, what I feel like I'd like to get to, which is just kind of being specific so that in the areas that we don't really, signs wouldn't be as appropriate for businesses, that we can allow businesses to advertise. That's really kind of what I am just kind of getting to. I mean, I went and talked to a lot of business owners, and they were just like, "Please don't get rid of our signs." And I was like, "Well, that's not really..." I think what we're trying, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to establish a balance in how we can do this after the Supreme Court ruling that basically says, "Okay, everything that everybody's done, throw it away and come up with something else," and try to figure that out.
I've seen a lot of off-premise signs for businesses that are under primary highways.
Oh, yeah.
And many of them in the right of way. But, so you need to ask yourself whether that is something that should be allowed or not. And the current draft does not contemplate it. The old draft does not contemplate, it's just not allowed. Of course, the right of way is not allowed, period. But we're seeing, we're seeing that. There's a, you know, this is a supply-demand sort of thing. So the market is telling you something right now. And what doesn't speak so loudly in the market is the scenic view shed angle, other than through this sort of form. So how do you, how do you balance that market, those market pressures?
Any clarification question? A clarification question about the off-premises. I'm getting a little confused, but, and I'm, I'm just going to use the art tour as an example of that annual event. Uh, some of our artists are way up in a hollow. Uh, so they have a sign on their, on their property. You know, you've arrived, here's the studio, Studio X. But it may be several miles along, along, um, a hollow with, with turnoffs. So there are multiple signs saying stay left or this way.
Probably all of those are not legal because, because they're probably all in the right of way.
So they're all.
But they're only there for a few days.
That's right, don't ask.
The weekend.
It's like if Johnny has a birthday party and he puts up a sign and some balloons.
On the stop sign.
And, and it's down, it's down there for the day.
Before you know what happened. But, but we'd be, but we'd like to be consistent because that, you know, it is an issue and there are people coming from out of town and it beats our chaos in a number of cases that people couldn't find their way and there are all these forms.
So it's, uh, off-premise signs are generally more of a permanent thing, right? Because in, in the context of read, how do you have an off, how do you have an off-premise temporary sign when you can't read the sign? How do you know if it's germane to that parcel or not?
Yeah, and this is super.
But, but if you're, if you're on somebody's parcel, you're taking up their temporary sign allotment, right? Which, you know, turn left and turn your feet.
But the thing with Mr. Curry was saying is that you're, they're only illegal if they're in the right of way, right? Like if you back it up off the right of way, even if it's the ten feet onto the personal property, then they get that allotment of temporary signs on their property.
Yeah.
But if you're in the easement of the road, it's not illegal anywhere, ever.
It's not legal.
You'd have to ask that property owner, is it okay if I put a sign up for the art tour for these three days during this month? And they're probably going to say, fine with me.
We've all driven on these, on these roads and they're, and, and they're, they're narrow. And if you go five feet off, three feet off some of those roads, the sign is behind a bush. You go this hole.
I, I placed four illegal signs earlier this month for the secondary road.
Should I be reporting?
There's the headline right there.
Call VDOT.
That's, well, that, there's, there's so much irony there. Call, yeah, definitely call.
It's got county seal, so it should be okay, actual government, you know.
Call VDOT for sure.
Call VDOT. This is what confessionals are for.
I know.
Pull them up before you get your letter drafted.
Well, so we want agricultural businesses to thrive, obviously. And we want off-main highway businesses that can't direct people to them to be able to put up off-premise signs, which are by definition temporary, right?
Don't have to be.
Yeah.
It can be, yeah.
And then highway commercial, what were the other districts banned that you mentioned?
Commercial, uh, commercial general?
General commercial and highway commercial.
And then industrial.
So we definitely, yeah, we have to refine that because we don't want to have a pop of chaos.
But, but I think Ms. Smith's right in the sense that we could also then take village commercial and then do what is, and they've already done this, but like do, in this discussion, the same thing there that you guys did, which was consider how close everything is. And I don't know how all the villages are zoned in, um, Woodville, Flunhill, uh, you know, but, you know, there is a difference there.
Until it's village commercial.
But, uh, yeah.
I mean, you could, you could do all kinds of weird things. You could link it to speed limit, you could.
Well, I mean, I do, do think it's interesting. I mean, that is a tool that we have, which is that we can do that. And that's significant because we don't have really a whole lot of other tools except for size and material. So.
We're not linking it to speed limit though, right? Because then people will be petitioning us to raise the speed limit.
So they can get bigger signs.
Or to lower the speed limit so they could get more or fewer signs.
What we know is the VDOT, won't do it anyway.
Great.
Well, and after, after we're able to.
And duration, I agree, duration, I, I've always felt, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, I was just going to say after we're able to gain clarity, because that's what I'm hearing tonight, is that everyone wants consistency and clarity. And I really do think once, um, we have that, a, a lot of things, as Ms. Smith said, will fix themselves. And then after that, I thi, I think we owe it to our businesses to research some tourism grants for help with directional signs. I think about the, um, sign, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the sign in the plains that, um, you know, it says.
Moscow.
This, this way, yeah, it, it's really kind of fun. Um, it's been there forever and it recently, grant money was raised to take care of that. So there are a few things that I believe we can do that can keep the charm of our county intact and help businesses and, um, and if we do our homework well, it costs us nothing. So.
Yeah, and it's consolidation also, which is the practical effect of those, those expensive VDOT signs that Ms. Fickell was talking about. So if we could do it from a county perspective, standardized, consolidated, attractive.
There's, there's a whole set of regulations for wayfinding signs, as you might imagine.
Yeah. Everything's regulated.
So how do we move forward?
Well, I think we have lots of comments. We've got, I think, alternative draft language that's been provided to us previously. We've got our own base draft ordinance language. I do think that just to manage this, we should stick for the time being on, on the temporary sign question because I think it's, obviously, um, it, it's sort of a, a morass, of a morass of an ordinance. Um, so I think we need to stay focused on that. But I do think that, in my view, each of us needs to take responsibility to, you know, come back with our own, after reviewing everything we've received over the months or for the last year or so, read, read that section and then let's try to move it forward and come up with a penultimate draft that we can review, settle on it and then put it up for a public hearing. I mean, that's, it's a lot of government talk there, but, so it's going to take a while. But I think we, we got to, we got to keep going here. I know we have many irons in the fire on many different fronts, signs and otherwise. Um, but, I mean, there's a lot of interest in this and so we just, we need to do our part to start nailing down what our plan is for the specific language and changes.
And I would say, you know, Art and I, if, if we can understand what the board wants to achieve, then we can try to wrap words around it in ordinance format to then, you know, be able to convey both the vision and the words to the public through public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you what I want. I want simple, really simple, easily, easy to follow, easy to enforce. I don't want carve-outs for materials, hay bales, plywood, plastic. I don't want any of that. And I think that some zoning district-specific language that allows some flexibility for businesses that are already in commercial areas makes sense and that's about it. But I, I just, I don't, I don't foresee a, a super complex, um, section on temporary signs, but probably some, some clear graphic representation of what people can do and where, which must, will be prob, likely in the form of some use table like we have in, in other parts of our zoning ordinance. But I'm hoping for simple, straightforward. And going back to my point about we all need to do our own part, I mean, usually on things like this, recognizing that I'm not a zoning expert, I go out and I try to fi, find other examples of places that I like and that seem to be doing things well that we can emulate. And I have the, I have certain of those places in mind. So I've started to look at how they, um, enforce their sign ordinance and how their sign ordinance is structured. And so I, I mean, yeah, I appreciate that you'll do the hard work, but I, I also want to do my own part to see what's out there, learn from other examples, and then maybe come back with some good ideas on how we can tighten things up. And, uh, so Rapid County, we don't have to make it that difficult. We're a small county, we have really interested, thoughtful citizens. We, people deserve clarity and I think we got to keep it simple, keep it enforceable and move on to the next thing, but make sure we get it right. So I just, I think we all need to come back and soon and just say clearly what we want to do.
From, from, well put. What I would think I would, I'm going to come back with is, is I think that there's some moving parts here. There are temporary signs, the size of the temporary signs, uh, total, uh, and then which district they'll be the most appropriate in and how many in size. And then animated signs. And, um, I personally think that we should have a flagpole height limit that matches the height limit of our buildings, which is thirty-five feet.
It's tolerant in some zones, but.
It's tolerant in some zones, but generally speaking, and I just think that that's probably fine. And that is a lot because it combines multiple elements. And so, you know, I'll really wrap my mind around how that can work because I'm concerned about orchards being able to advertise and I'm concerned with businesses being able to advertise. And I want people to be able to put up political signs on their lawns.
For more than one candidate.
For more than one candidate. And I want RAC to be able to put up signs. And, you know, I want, uh, the other things in the county that require signage to be able to do it. And just to, to Matthew's point, and I think he brought this up, you guys utilize banners. And you utilize a banner that's twenty-four square feet on one side.
Right.
And so that's fifty square feet. And so that needs to be taken into account in the sense that if you're not putting it in the VDOT right of way, where would those things be appropriate and how can we work those things in? And it is something that I think is worthwhile. And I think the Farm Tour does that.
The part that's not painted or signed, there's no signage, that's against the woods.
Yeah, and if you can't say it from both sides, we wouldn't count it.
I put duration is another.
And duration.
And duration, absolutely.
And that was the flip side of that coin was duration.
Small signs might get a longer than a banner can be a week, but a step inside could have a month, sure.
Yeah, yeah, and we can do that. And we haven't, I don't think we've talked about that part of it. So there's a lot of moving parts that can fit together and, um, and I, I, because of the variables, it can get kind of complicated, but I think we can get there because we have so many people that are really interested in helping us.
Are you looking to the grant table, the stuff, the grant table?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
I would add too, with, with all of these goals, I, at least from my perspective, I recognize that there may be some conflicting goals here.
Yeah.
For trade-offs, which is what makes it so challenging for all of us. I mean, at a high level, we're all after the same thing. We want to keep our county beautiful. We don't want to jump up with signs that we know people have to make a living and so forth for special events on property, so forth. So it's, it's finding, uh, it's the art of the possible. I can snip art into this.
You know, honestly, I, I think Debbie's idea about, I would do it orderly, um, but it gives people away the signs. If you do it regularly, the people who put the signs in their right of ways have noticed that they've had to go get it. And it would, you know, I thought we could get a lot of people out clearing up those.
We get lines blocked, right?
Yeah. Now, I think we could make it.
Pick up garbage along the highway.
Yep.
And I think it would be a huge difference.
Yeah, I mean.
All right, so do we want to have?
I think, I think we just need to keep, if we, in my view, we stick to, if we stick to the subpart of the sign ordinance, the big giant sign ordinance, stick to temporary signs, keep, I would suggest that we keep it on the agenda and we come back prepared with more specific ideas, each of us, about where we want it to go and see if we can advance the language toward a next to, next to final draft. And so the public has an expectation of timing and when we might have a public hearing and adopt something. Every time we talk about it, I think people are afraid that we're going to adopt something. We're not, yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to be thoughtful about it. But we also at some point need to think about other things.
Yes.
Um, also of importance to our community. So it's a balancing act of getting it done, but also being open-minded and hearing people, so.
So we, we'll have the three tourist come applications next month, um, for consideration. And is the library presentation next month going to be in the evening? I would hope it would be because I think it's of greater public interest.
Oh, you mean the.
Can be.
The library, right?
I think you asked.
Expansion plan.
Yeah, I think that that should be, so maybe, maybe we should regroup and come back in July, unless we have a special work session.
Either way, we can figure it out later.
Yep, works for me. All right.
It would be great if we could get an interface with VDOT and have some kind of schedule in place.
Oh, I'm, I'm on it.
Thank you very much, Cory.
Thanks, everyone, for coming.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Public comment.
Yep.
We'll do a public comment.
I think we met, but it's a letter.
Right of ways, how do we get rid of that?
I mean, I swear to God, that's like.
There are some rules and I think we can formally ask them to authorize us to pull them. There's a whole thing.
Do Barbara my best.
I think it started out simple.
Please tell Davarrell it's not too late for a ruzla.
And then because we didn't ask VDOT to do anything, they just are allowing everything.
Especially working for plans, it's not too late, it's still so early. No, but it's still so early. I know every year everyone's like, it's so late. I'm like, no, it's not, it's still so early.